January 8th, 2019, Meeting of the Board of Education. I'm Kate Borninski. Happy New Year to everyone, and I hope everyone had a wonderful, restful break. Additionally, I'd like to welcome my fellow board members and ask them to introduce themselves, starting on my right.
My name is Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Hi, good evening. I'm Anupam Chugsedu. I'm so happy to be back. Happy New Year.
Hi, I'm Patrick Kehoe. Thanks for coming out this evening.
Patty McCoyn, thank you for being here tonight.
Leonardo Savage, again, thank you for being here.
Hi, John Wazarowitz.
Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce your staff?
Good evening, yes, and Happy New Year, welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Elizabeth Adams, and thank her for taking our minutes each of our meetings, and also for Charlie Jones, the man behind the scenes who records our meetings, so that people that are not able to be here can view the meetings. I'd like to ask the remaining staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening, Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Hi, WPO's Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, everyone. Liz Vartanian-Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources.
Good evening, Curtis Quitz, Executive Director of Student Services.
Hello, Mike Bender, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Heather Colombo, Education Association President.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and the first item we have on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda, action item 190147. Do I have a motion on this, please?
Madam President, I move that we approve the adoption of the consent agenda, action item number 19-01-47.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Member Chugsedu and supported by Member Brooks. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none. Ms. Merritt, would you like to take us through the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, President Borninski. This evening, the consent agenda consists of human resource transactions. Since our last time together, we have a new hire, resignations, the approval of regular meeting on December the 11th, 2018, and the special meeting on December 18th, 2018. And we have the second reading of Bylaws 0100, definition, as well as Bylaw 0120, powers and philosophy.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Good evening. I would like to welcome Rebecca Middleton. This is very exciting. Rebecca is our first teacher. We hired in 2019, so welcome Rebecca. Rebecca will be a co-teacher at Pioneer Middle School, and she will be teaching science, math, and English language arts. She graduated from Eastern Michigan University with a bachelor's degree, and we would like to welcome her to our school district. Welcome Rebecca.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us. Welcome. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
Congratulations. There's the key. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have the Board Committee Reports. I don't have a lot to report, other than, in case anyone missed our special meeting on December 18th, we did have to appoint a new board member, and I'm happy to announce that it was Anupam Chugsedu. So glad that she is rejoining the board. And otherwise, just sort of a low-key break, and glad to be back. So now, I would like Anupam Chugsedu to talk about Student Performance and Achievement Committee.
Thank you. Well, we have our first meeting of the year tomorrow, so I would love it if you all showed up. We have a few curriculum items that we're going to talk about. The K-12 Science Curriculum presentation is going to be shared with us, along with a couple of new courses. So we're looking at a computer science course, as well as piloting a new course on Agile through Language Arts. So please join us here at 4:30 tomorrow.
Thank you. And next up is Policy Committee, with Patty McCoyn.
We have not met this year. We have a meeting next Tuesday. Actually, it will be at 5:30, not 4:30, and we meet here. Everybody is welcome to attend. It is the best meeting. We're going to keep this going. I'm just going to point out that our citizen members actually are attending the board meeting.
That's true.
Ours are too. We had a few. There's a competition, so show up tomorrow.
Okay, and next is the Finance and Operations Committee, Member Kehoe.
Finance and Operations Committee is going to have to step up our game. We did have a meeting on December 20th, just before the break, and we talked about some of the bond projects that you'll see on the approval process this afternoon, or this evening. And we also talked about the priorization process that we go through for capital improvements overall. We had a really good discussion on both those projects, as well as the process overall, and how we are taking the community's very generous support for those capital projects and making a difference in the schools. And you'll see a couple of those things that come up rate this evening. Our next Finance and Operations meeting will be Thursday, January 17th, so just two days after the Policy Committee meeting. And I encourage you to attend both, so you can judge for yourself which one's the cooler meeting.
Thank you. And next is the Educational Excellence Foundation Report, and we have a special guest, Mr. Mike Ritter, who is the Vice Chair of the EEF Board. He is here tonight.
You gonna hold that for me? No, I'm just gonna point it up, so it...
It was gonna fall down.
Was it? Okay, so I'm like this, is this good?
Sure.
You sure?
You can move it up onto the podium, too, if you want.
It was gonna fall down.
Was it gonna fall down?
We don't need to do that, so...
You might have to talk loud, then.
Oh, that's never usually too much of an issue.
That's true.
So basically, obviously, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. And obviously, myself, my name is Mike Ritter, so I'm the Vice Chair of the EEF. Back here, this is gonna be Gretchen Ward, who I think probably most of you actually know. She's the Executive Director of the EEF. But I, myself, am the Vice Chair, as I said. Along the same lines, I have three children that are in the district, have two that are at Salem High School, as well as one that is at Byrd. And even on top of that, I'm also a small business owner, so I have my business right here in downtown Plymouth. Along the same lines, I obviously like to welcome the two new board members, and welcome back Anu as well, with regards to that. But basically, what we like to do is at the very first board meeting of every single month, is to come in and basically share a little bit about how the EEF impacts the students of the actual district. Many people usually ask what the EEF is, and obviously, for those of you that are new, may not know what we are. We are the 501(c)(3) that actually helps to support the school district, and have done so since 1985. We do this in a variety of ways. We do this as far as, with regards to teacher grants. We do this in forms of scholarships, corporate giving, as well as donor-advised funds. This month, the reason that I'm actually here at this point in time is to basically talk a little bit about the classroom grants. And three times per year, the EEF actually does granting for different types of classroom grants that come in through the teachers. In the 2018-19 school year, we were actually able to donate $48,000 to the teachers. And we've actually awarded grants in excess of $443,000, going back to 2000, to every single school within the district, which was a phenomenal achievement with regards to what we're being able to do. And so basically, what I want to do is kind of take you out to our website, which Nick actually has up here, and if you kind of scroll down to the bottom, one of the things that we like to actually highlight on a monthly basis is something called the Grant of the Month. And so this grant here, basically, what we do is, last week of every single month, is we go out, update this, put a fresh new one, so at the beginning of the month, if you want to check back, you can actually see what it is that we've actually done. In this case, it's for the sensory hallway at Dodson Elementary School. Am I not being loud enough?
Apparently not.
We can hear you fine. The problem is that it's not being picked up by the microphone for the people that are watching at home.
Oh, watching at home, all right, sorry about that. So basically, with regards to the sensory hallways, $750 is what we had actually done as far as a grant for the teachers at Dodson Elementary. If you go down to where it says "more grants" at the bottom there, Nick, if you click on this, this is actually going to take you to the page where it's going to show all the different classroom grants that we actually granted in the previous cycle. So with regards to this, if you scroll down all the way to the bottom, you'll see eight actual past grants that we did, and it gives you a nice little snapshot as far as with regards to how this is impacting the students, and how it's actually impacting the learning process within those actual classrooms. So it shows what the actual grant was, who it was granted to, and then a little synopsis. At the very bottom, it's going to give you a total. So in this case, we actually ended up granting $17,268 in our most recent granting cycle. Now, if you scroll back up, Nick, you're gonna see an area on here where the application is at. So right there, this basically, if you click on this, it's a two-page application. So this is where the teachers can go, fill out the information on the first page, this is their information, and what you'll see right in the middle there, the deadline, we have a deadline for our most recent process that we're going to be looking at, which is going to be due January the 18th, so next Friday. Scroll down one more page, this is basically the rules of the road. So this is going to say what we're able to do with the dollars, at the same time, also what we can't actually do with regards to it. So it gives teachers a really great way to actually submit this back into Gretchen, so we can get this into the cycle for people to take a look at. Now, along the same lines, you guys would be amazed at the interesting and innovative grants that the teachers do bring to us on a basically granting cycle. It's incredible to see what they're wanting to do, and the ways that they're going to be able to use these grants to basically help the students completely, you know, change everything and thrive. It is incredible. But at the same time, we're always happy to be able to give out these dollars as far as in forms of grants, but at the end of the day, the only way that we can do this is to help raise funds. So what I'm going to do is take a selfish plug right now, and basically let you know that if you can save the date, because we have our biggest fundraising event of the year, which is the Uncorked 2019, and this is actually going to be on Friday, April the 26th, at Fox Hills. So next meeting, when the next person's here to kind of talk about this, they'll give you a little bit more of the detail, but at the same time, if you could at least put that in your calendar, so that we can obviously continue what it is that we're able to do for the students and have great impact throughout the entire district, that would be great. But I appreciate everybody's time tonight. Thank you so much, and obviously, I hope everybody has a great 2019.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mike. So tonight, unfortunately, we do not have celebrating success, so we're going to go straight to citizens' comments. And I got one card. Did anybody else want to speak?
Just one more.
Okay, one more. So each person who speaks is allowed three minutes, and Mr. Brandon will be timing you, and it'll be right up there on the screen. So first is Richard Desson.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Richard Desson. I'm a father of a daughter who swims at Salem High School, and I'm just, real quick, I saw that the pool renovation projects were up on the list, and I was just trying to get some clarification if starting blocks and touchpads were still going to be kept into the bid proposal. I have kind of an understanding that it's been dropped out, and Canton High School was able to upgrade theirs, and with only two pools, it would be kind of a disadvantage for our swimmers if we didn't put the modernized starting blocks. It cuts down on the times and everything the swimmers get, and most of the surrounding high schools have upgraded their locks and pad system, makes them more competitive with the new starting style system. That was it. I just wanted to see if it was still going to be in the budget, and I see that that is after this. So that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. And then next is Monica Schuffler.
Thank you for allowing me to address you. I'm Monica Schuffler. I live in Canton, and I am a parent, citizen, and district employee. I wanted to address an issue that affects 12 of our teams on our high school campus for six months a year, in addition to the students, families, spectators, and community members, which is the need for clean, adequate restroom facilities on our soccer field. There are currently two porta-potties, which are poorly maintained, and an environmental disturbance to the fields and our high school campus. I, as a parent and spectator for several years, have been witnessing the decline in the environment of those soccer fields. We have teams that visit, and they, I think are, I've heard them voice they're offended by the disgusting porta-potties, to put it frankly. We have had parents repeatedly email our athletic directors, asking for the porta-potties to be properly maintained, and our athletes are suffering from this. And additionally, we have, of course, grandparents and family members and community members, including coaches that are recruiting our players, that attend these games with no adequate facilities on those specific fields. There is the option to go to the football fields, and it is a little bit of a walk from the soccer fields, and when you have a 75-year-old grandfather that has traveled for three hours, he's going to miss a little bit of the game that he's come to, to try to get to the restroom. When I've brought my family members over to the football field, and there is a football game going on, we're asked to pay to walk in, to use the facilities at the football fields. So I know that this is not an academic issue, which is the priority as a parent and educator myself, but it is something that I think that you need to be aware of, that is a continuous issue for our athletic departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Administrative Reports and Recommendations, and first is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, and I think, as you shared, we've only been back for a couple of days, so I don't have a lot to report, but I do want to give a special shout-out to PCEP Senior, Elizabeth Liu. We learned through the North American International that they announced their winners for the 31st Annual Poster Contest, and this is a creative competition that draws over 750 applicants from over 58 schools in Michigan, and it's open to sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and it's really designed to give young artists a chance to be a part of the auto show, which is the largest auto show in the world, and earn cash prizes. And so our senior, Elizabeth Liu, was awarded the $1,000 grand prize of the Chairman's Award. So it's always a great opportunity for us to showcase the great things that our young people are doing each and every day, and it's great to see them recognized for their efforts. Also, just want to give recognition of a day coming up, Coffee with Monica. That's the Winter Coffee with Monica. I always love to engage our community. This gives an opportunity to answer questions, to give you some updates on what's going on in the district. We try to go back and forth between Canton and Plymouth, evening and morning, so this time, we will meet on Thursday, January 24th. This will be a morning meeting, 10:30 a.m., at the Plymouth District Library. Our coffee and refreshments will be supplied by Sweet Waters of Canton, so we always thank them for that support, and look forward to seeing all that are interested in coming out. And I also just want to say thank you to Gretchen Dachiliev and Mike Ritter with the EEF. Just seeing the incredible opportunities that they provide for our teachers to support our students, we couldn't do it without them. So we always talk about the strength of our partnerships, and EEF is such an incredible partnership, we're so fortunate to have them, so I want to thank them.
Thank you. And next is Teaching and Learning, Dr. Bender.
Thank you, President Borninski, and good evening. As a district, we are committed to educating the whole child, mind and body, and work to support the social-emotional well-being of each student. The youth in Plymouth Canton are very much like the youth in the rest of the United States, and as a country, we've been seeing an alarming increase in suicide and drug abuse over the past five years. We recognize the need for education in these areas, not just for our students, but for our faculty, staff, administrators, and parents. Earlier this school year, district and school administrators had the opportunity to learn more about some very valuable resources available within our own community. Tonight, we will hear from Mr. Steve Wyndham, from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and Mr. Brian Spitzbergen, from Growth Works. Both of these gentlemen bring great experience and resources to our district. As you may know, we have worked with Growth Works for a number of years, and they have been a great partner for us as a social service provider, supporting our youth and families within our community. The AFSP is new to our district, but well-known throughout the state of Michigan. They are currently working with several school districts in the area, and have some excellent programs that we believe will help. We'll begin by welcoming Steve Wyndham, from the AFSP, to the podium for an overview of these very valuable resources. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the invitation. Thank you to the community members and to the board. It's nice to be here. We are working diligently to work with the youth and engage these types of meetings. Just a little brief introduction about who we are. What we're going to go through tonight about who AFSP is, what we do, some of the actual tangible resources that are available right now in the community. A little preface, though, of myself. I'm a father of three. I live in Livonia, so not the glorious Plymouth Canton district, but we spend lots of times downtown Plymouth and in Canton as well. My oldest is eight, five, and two. So I will be dealing with this topic very, very soon. This is scary to think that suicide prevention is one of the major things that we have to worry about as parents, as educators, and as community members. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death in the U.S. for ages 15 to 34. It is an alarming, alarming problem in our country, and overall, for all Americans, it's the 10th-leading cause of death. And of the top 10 leading causes of death, suicide is the only one that's on the rise. The other nine leading causes of death are seeing a decline in their mortality rate, and AFSP is really proud to be the leader in the movement to reduce these rates. So who we are and what we do, AFSP is here to save lives and bring hope to those affected by suicide. So that is what we do. Our mission statement, simple and to the point, we're saving lives from this issue, and we are bringing hope to those that are affected. We know that in 2016, nearly 45,000 people died by the issue of suicide. We also know that for every suicide, over 100 people are affected. So over 450,000 people are affected every day. So we need to realize that this is a problem that we can solve, though. We know from research that suicides can be prevented, and our work can help with that. We do have a goal to reduce the suicide rate 20% by 2025. There's four major pillars in that goal. We'll talk about that a little bit later. I want to get to some of the tangible things that we can do here in the community. But who we are is that we're the leading grassroots movement around this issue. So AFSP is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We are nationwide. We're headquartered in New York City. We have a chapter in all 50 states. We do international work as well, but anywhere that you see these programs tonight, they're duplicable somewhere else in the country. So whether you have a loved one, a relative, another family member, or an acquaintance somewhere else, we can actually help them as well. We are not a crisis center or a treatment center. I am by no means a mental health professional. We leave that task to the mental health professionals. One of the major things we educate on is referrals, signs and symptoms, warning signs, how the general public can help with this issue. Every single person in this room, and a lot of us listening now tonight, know the issue of stop, drop, and roll. We were all taught how to put out a fire on ourselves when we were very, very young. I would beg to differ that not a lot of people have been on fire, but we've all been taught, in worst-case scenario, what to do when you catch on fire. We need to know, in worst-case scenario, how can we when someone is thinking about killing themselves. So one of the things that we do, we operate on a chapter basis. So everything that we do in the state of Michigan is driven by our volunteer base, and so we are always recruiting new volunteers from our statewide Board of Directors, all the way down to people who can table on a random basis. And so we need volunteers at all levels, but what we do is, in these areas, our research, prevention, advocacy, loss and healing, interactive screening program, our walks are what fund everything, and also our partnership programs entail a lot of programs that we did not create ourselves, but we know that they work and they are effective in our mission. We are the largest funder of suicide prevention research in the nation, only second to the federal government. AFSP invests more money into research and finding out, how do we deal with this issue of suicide prevention, mental health, and these issues that affect suicide? We also have a local program, where we are going to be bringing a researcher to the University of Michigan campus in the end of March, most likely, where we're going to be able to talk about what are the dollars that we're funding these research programs are doing to save lives and bring hope. So some of the things we want to talk about tonight are the educational programs. What are the things that are tangible to be able to put into place, be held in the community, educate our teachers, educate our students, educate everyone, big and small, who's dealing with this issue? Talk Saves Lives is our flagship program. This comes in four different modules, from our basic community module of Talk Saves Lives. It's a 30-to-40-minute program, which helps you understand, how do you reach out, how do you witness, how do you understand, how do you know when something's wrong with someone, and how do you have that tough conversation? And how do you ask someone, have you thought about suicide? This also comes in an LGBTQ module. This comes in a firearms module, and also a senior citizens' module. So I know we're talking about our youth tonight, but our senior citizens are seeing a rapid increase in the suicide rate as well. This is the major piece that we stand on with our education program within the schools. That Talk Saves Lives program can be given to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. We do not have programming for the students below the sixth-grade level, due to comprehension, understanding, self-awareness. We speak with the students starting in the sixth grade with that Talk Saves Lives program. In our ninth-through-12 graders, where we know the risk is higher, access to lethal means is higher, these things that we're looking for are much more real in our students, we have these three modules. So we started with this program called More Than Sad. This is on the NREP list, so it's a national evidence-based program, where we start with our educators. We educate every single person in the district, from bus drivers to teachers, to librarians, to coaches, and every single school personnel gets this training. It will be a little redundant for our mental health professionals within the building, but again, this is about teaching every single other person how to be the safety net, and how to help refer to that mental health professional. We have a parents' program, which actually runs secondary to the educators. We want parents to be educated. It's a 75-minute program with videos and a PowerPoint. We're able to educate parents, how do you have that tough conversation? How do you look for these things in your student? How do you not write this off as adolescent laziness, or hormone swing, but really looking into, do I have a problem with my student, and how do I reach out to them? And then we go to the teens. We actually work with those 9, 10, 11, and 12-year-olds in the classroom. It's a 40-minute program. It can fit in the classroom period. It's a video. It teaches them and shows them the stories of four students, and how depression affects them differently, and teaches them help-seeking behavior. This is the evidence-based piece of this program, where teaching students ideal help-seeking behaviors shows a proven increase in both peer and self-referrals within the building that we run this program in. And so being able to help understand, how do we help ourselves, how do we help each other, how do we help our students, and how do our parents get educated as well? Because I know, as a father, this is a really scary thing to think about, that if I were to miss this, or if we were to deal with this, or if I had to ask this question, have you thought about suicide? We need to help people understand that this is not something we choose, this is not anything different than cancer, or diabetes, or heart disease, or lung cancer. My grandfather just passed away from pancreatic cancer, and he didn't choose that issue, but he had to deal with it, and our family has to deal with it. You don't choose a mental health disorder. You don't choose these suicidal ideations. But we have to educate our community members on how to deal with it. The other piece that we do have for our very young population, this is called Science Matter Early Detection. This is the only program AFSP offers that actually has a fee. Everything else that we do is at no cost. We do this through our local fundraising and dollars that we put locally back into the community, but Science Matter does have a licensing fee that comes with it. It's very minimal, based on the number of teachers, but this is for K-5 educators, and how do they witness those signs, early detection? Just like cancer, diabetes, heart disease, we know early detection is key in all lifesaving events. And so this is a great program for our K-5. We have Talk Saves Lives for 6, 7, 8, and we have More Than Sad for 9, 10, 12. Again, we do have a lot of specific subset programs for different communities. LGBT community has a program for themselves, bipolar has two different programs that we can deal with, and medical students and physician offices. So if you are with a physician that your child is seeing, and they're not adequately prepared to deal with this issue of mental health awareness, suicide prevention, we can help educate those physician office employees to be able to better detect these issues. For our seniors who are off to college, a lot of people believe that when I go to college, everything's going to get great. I dealt with this myself, when I went to Western Michigan University, having to deal with depression my freshman year. This is a real issue when our children go away to college. This is for our seniors who are going off to college, and we actually run this program on college campuses at all levels of college students. And so we ran this about a dozen times on the University of Michigan, and a handful of other colleges and universities around the state, but this is a great piece for our students who might be on that next step to their adventure in life. We do a lot of advocacy in public policy. We go to Lansing every year, we go to DC every year. Anyone who is politically charged and wants to make sure that laws are being passed around suicide prevention, we actually have a bill that is in the Education Committee in Lansing... right now around teachers, having a law that we're not adding any mandatory additional CE credits, but two hours of the requirement right now will be mandatory suicide prevention training. We have a law about state mental health parity and about the cost of treatment. So if you have any students, we love to bring students to this. We had seven students come from Howell High School last year and meet with their elected officials and talk about the fact that they had lost a student two weeks prior to coming to this Capitol Day, and why it's important that their teachers understand how they can help in this cause. And so we're able to help change laws and actually move the marble here in the state. Loss and Healing, so this is the second half of our mission, so to help bring hope to those affected by suicide. International Survivors of Suicide Loss Day, we host these around the globe the Saturday before Thanksgiving. We had it back in November this past year in 2018. We'd love to have one here in the community to give those who have been touched by this issue a way, an outlet, a place to understanding, a place of community and help and healing. Our Survivor Outreach Program, this is a more personal piece. If you're not ready to sit around in a group and talk to someone, you can have a phone call, a lunch date, a coffee, Skype, and if anyone's lost in this community, whether it's a student, whether it's a parent, whether it's a teacher, if you've lost someone to the issue of suicide, we can pair you with someone who can talk to you about your loss, help you get through it, help you understand what you might be going through in that dark time. This book is available at no cost. This is a book, if any child or teenager has lost someone to suicide, someone loses a sibling, a grandparent, a parent, this book is at no cost. We can order these, have them shipped to schools, have them shipped to doctors' offices, wherever these need to be on deck. But this is a book that is amazingly put together by the Dougie Center and ourselves to help young people understand, why did this person die, and how do I get through this loss? We have some journeys, some videos about long-term loss survivors, and people can access these online. Again, if anyone needs questions or have any loss issues, we can help with them. There's a memory quilt program. There's ISP, which is a screening program for when students get into college or large organizations as well. And then all that we do is done by our community walks. So we have walks in Ann Arbor, Lansing, Rochester, Detroit, our Out of the Darkness Walks, raise the money that we put back into the community. We do have campus walks. You'll see here in the middle, we have University of Michigan, which actually is the largest campus walk in the nation. We have MSU, Central, Western, we're bringing all these colleges online. We have Howell High School. We have Gross Pointe High School. We can do high school events where students are in charge of the planning, of the promotion, of the awareness, of the education. They can raise these funds, and whatever money is that the walk raises stays back in the community for those students to put together. So we're looking at college campuses where we're starting American Foundation for Suicide Prevention student organizations on those campuses. They're actually registered student orgs, and we're working with Gross Pointe right now to have a mental health awareness organization within their high school. And the money that that high school walk raises stays in that building for those students to put together for Talk Saves Lives, for a coffee and chat, for these things to actually reduce stigma. And so we're creating our own revenue stream by telling the story of saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide, but then the money is going back into the community to actually do what we say, and it's all done through this grassroots program. We have a lot of other opportunities to raise funds. If you don't like walking, we have a motorcycle rally. We have a tour and a hike. We have a lot of great things. And this is the other big piece, too. Not only do we fund things that we've created and that are NREPed, and these are evidence-based programs, but we do other things with other organizations. So you'll see on here Safe Talk, which is a three-hour training, Assist Training, which is Applied Suicide Intervention Skills Training, Mental Health First Aid, which is a teen and an adult program. We have the funding for all of these. The school district has already been sent the model school policies. We have a model school policy that you can actually instill around education, trainings, and preventative efforts. We also do have a toolkit that we've sent to the district as well. There is an after-suicide toolkit, which we delivered. Too much, I believe, but there's a lot of things that we can do. So this is completely understanding the idea around preventative education. So AFSP is a lifesaving organization. Everything we do is rooted and founded in education and science and research, and we know that when we put these things into a building, into a community, it does really actually have a difference and helps us save lives. So we are here to help you. We wanted to present and just let you know all the things that are available. Again, we are in need of volunteers as well, so I cannot deliver all these on my own, but we would love people to get involved. We would love to put these dollars to work. We, like I said, we can fund all of the education and training piece of it. We are an education organization, and education does help us save lives. So we look forward to working with anyone, and anyone who'd like to get involved, please see me as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Could you come back up to the podium? Because I think we might have some questions.
Yeah, I forgot about that part. Sorry. I was just like, no questions. Questions?
Hopefully there are questions. Yes. Remember CEDU? Can you run us through a district that has implemented this?
Yeah.
So talk to us about time, beginning to end.
Yeah.
The volunteers needed.
Yep.
So parent involvement, staff involvement, if you could just kind of walk us through that?
Definitely. So one of the greatest successes that we've had is out in Howell High School. Howell High School has an event every year called Senior Survivor, and what they do is they elect seven boys and seven girls out of the senior class, and they live in their high school for a week. Every day, it's a fundraising challenge, and so every day you kind of turn in your fundraising, and it's like the show Survivor, the lowest two who don't, like, raise enough get kicked off the island. And so then the rest of the students stay all week long, and the top guy wins, and he's like the senior survivor. They had picked us as their beneficiary. They kind of rotate as Michigan Chapter. They were actually able to designate all their funds stay in the state of Michigan and not half of it going back to our research and education programming, but staying here for local. They had lost a student. His name was Ethan. He was a senior boy about a week before this event took off, and everyone had kind of thrown up their arms and said, what was going on? Did we cause this? And the students stood strong and said, this proves the need for this. This proves that we need to educate our parents, educate our staff. And so they raised about $78,000 in the week, and they donated to AFSP. And we've been in the community, we've sent two community members to get trained in a local peer support group. So there are now community members hosting a peer support group for those who have lost someone to the issue of suicide. But within the building, we started with the educators. And so we went to the educators, and we trained all of them in our More Than Sad program. So it's a two-hour training. Teachers actually do get continuing education for the two hours. It meets all state and national minimum standards for continuing ed. So we ran them through the More Than Sad program, and it was great. You know, we provide all the manuals, we catered in food for them. We made it an enjoyable experience to talk about something that's not super enjoyable. Then the entire student body went through Talk Saves Lives. And so half the students did it on one Wednesday, and half the students did it on the other Wednesday. We did this in their entire auditorium. We filled the whole place up. Their entire student body went through the Talk Saves Lives program, and then we hosted a parent night. We had about 100 parents show up, which is the largest one I've ever seen, sadly. And we had about 100 parents show up. It was a 75-minute. It was after-school one night, like a 7 o'clock or 6 o'clock start time, and we ran all the parents through the training program. And then now, this semester, we're working to see where in the curriculum we can fit in the teen More Than Sad program for the in-classroom presentation. So they're also doing a walk this spring, so their entire community is getting involved. They're really starting to engage Livingston County, Fowlerville, some of these other outlying districts that might not have the resources. And so thinking about not only Howell, but other districts around them and offering, and their principal has helped me make connections to the other principals, to get in and have those meetings. And for me, it's kind of a sales gig, to show you what we have as an evidence-based, you know, CE-worthy program that can actually help you save lives by starting with your educators and creating a safety net around the building to teach referral processes, warning signs, and symptomology, and also better understanding, what are we dealing with with mental illness? But then also moving to parents, because we want to make sure the parents are educated before these students come home and talk about it, just like Dare. When I was a kid, like Dare went through. I actually was the essay winner of my Dare class, by the way. But, you know, we had to make sure parents are ready for this. And so it's a really sticky subject. A lot of the parents that show up are dealing with this and really don't need to be educated, and it's hard to get them in the room. I'm going to Cal Casket at the end of this month, and we're spending a lot of money to feed these people, because their big thing is, if you're not feeding me, I'm not coming to listen. And so we will do what it takes to work with the community and the district. We can incentivize it with apparel, or giveaways, or gift cards, but we know that this information is lifesaving. And so it starts with kind of the educators, the students, and then from there, we deal with the loss, we deal with, you know, the LGBTQ, we deal with the military families, we deal with the law enforcement, we deal with, we start to branch out. And so we know that communities are centered around their schools. Communities live and die by schools. And as a father, I know that this information is crucial. If I would have known what my children will know growing up, I wouldn't have lost my two best friends. And so it's a big issue.
So my next question is for the administration. Like, what's your vision for how this is going to fit in with our current?
It's a curriculum. So it's not that, okay, we had a loss, or we've been affected by this, and now we check a box. It's no more checking boxes. This is something that, just like you teach sexual education, just like you teach woodshop, this is a curriculum piece of your education, where your teachers are trained. Every new teacher that comes on every single year, a random teacher that was on tonight, we would host a district-wide or a county-wide, or we would make sure that every single teacher got caught up to speed. Because the bill that we have in there says once every five years when teachers renew their licensing. So we only are asking for two hours of training every five years. In my mind, that's not enough, but we'll take what we can get for now. So it is a curriculum piece, where every year, you know, you have your teacher night. This becomes part of your freshman parent orientation. This becomes part of everything. This is a topic you have to talk about, just about drugs and alcohol are a real thing that people need to be educated on. Suicide prevention's a real piece that we need to educate on, too. And it's also, it's at no cost. I mean, yeah, science matter. The one program does have a small licensing fee, but we can help offset that with businesses or other places, or if we can help reduce your budget, Mental Health First Aid, which is an amazingly amazing program for anyone who's on a crisis team or a flight team. When Ann Arbor School District, they lost nine students a couple of years ago in like a 12-week span. We funded their SISM program for their flight team. It's about helping us understand what you need, and if we don't have it right here and ready to go, we'll figure out a way to say yes.
So you mentioned a fundraiser component, though. So what were the?
We host our own fundraising, and so there's no, Howell has really grabbed on to what we do. And Ethan's mother jumped on board and wanted to make sure that AFSP doesn't go away, so she's hosting a small walk every year. Detroit and Grand Rapids, and these major markets are where we're going to raise over a million dollars this year, and I can guarantee you, we won't come close to spending half of that, because not enough people are asking for what we have.
Remember Keyhole?
I'm asking, actually, a new question is, what's the district's plan on this? I understand it's a curriculum, but is this something we're planning on implementing?
Yeah, so we actually started at our leaders meeting in December, where we gave the safe presentation to our principals, and really kind of beginning a slower process of, instead of saying full implementation of all, having the principals work individually and bringing that onboard within their schools, looking at secondary beginning. Most importantly, where I think the interest right now, Dr. Binder, is like Stark and PCEP?
Right, and also Discovery. And so we actually are beginning with a parent coffee, a middle school parent coffee, actually on Wednesday, January 16th, at 9:30 in the morning at West Middle School. And at that time, there'll be a 30-minute presentation for parents to begin the conversation. As Steve mentioned, very important in terms of sharing information with families, because it's really, it's a whole-community approach that we use. And so in addition to that, we're also moving forward with schools' scheduling experiences for faculty and staff. As Ms. Merritt mentioned, Starkweather, Discovery, I've already identified dates where they'll be engaged in training of their faculty and staff, and so we are moving forward with this process of education.
So what's our timeline for this? Will we have the high schools and the middle schools done by the end of this school year?
So we're looking to, we would look for a full implementation, but literally as we're moving to get, I will share this, as we go to do our building visits as a core team, that's really the number-one topic that's on our teachers' minds, is mental health and challenges that they're facing daily. So we have a sense of urgency about getting resources in place, and so that's why we had a partnership meeting early on, I think it was early December. And so we kind of jumped in quickly and trying to get dates onboard, and so we'll have more time, you know, in terms, some of the PD is already established for many of our buildings. So we'll actually get a full timeline, a schedule of when it's done. The idea would be the full implementation, but trying to get, work with the buildings right now to get resources in place as quickly as possible. So like we said, Starkweather was onboard, Discovery has already scheduled dates, I think, working with PCEP next, but really trying to get urgency around the topic.
So I hear the sense of urgency, but I don't hear the commitment on the dates.
So because I don't have date check committed, and that's the work that we're doing with Steve to get that.
So can I follow up on that? Would you say by the end of this school year?
That's what I asked. So that's what I'm asking. This is, can you make that commitment by the end of the school?
So what I would like to say is, I'll come back to you with more information as to the dates and, you know, Steve's availability and what we can do. Literally, we had our meeting probably, was that the last week in December? And we're just back on break, but working. When I say some urgency around it, we wanted to get here to the board, because we're working so quickly, we didn't want you to not hear about things that are already being implemented in the, at the building.
We really appreciate the presentation and the sense of urgency. When can you tell us when you'll be able to tell us that you're done?
So how about we talk offline and get back with you? And I'll give you an update in Friday notes.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll add it to our questions.
Thank you, because I want us to be revisiting this every week until we can answer for every meeting.
I have a couple of follow-up questions for the parent. You said you've got a parent night, or you're hosting something for parents on January 16th at 9:30. That's just an introduction?
Yeah, so we're going to squeeze in Talk Saves Lives. Yep, so we're going to crunch it down to half an hour. We're going to run through it. It starts with the statistics and kind of what's going on with the issue. It talks about the 10th-leading cause, go through the research, kind of what we learned about someone who might be in crisis prevention, and what we know saves lives already, and then what can you do? And that last piece is a little bit of, you know, how do you talk? Like, when do you do this? And so it'll be a brief piece of it, but it's going to be crunched, but we will get the information out there. And we will come with a resource table with the information that, we have a lot of brochures, ways to access this information online. So even, I brought tonight some lifesaver manual cards. We sent 5,000 of those to the Ann Arbor School District to have all their high school students get one. It's just a nice little wallet card with some information. So we've got the things ready to go now, and we are working diligently with the district to get these information out there.
So just from a parent advocate perspective, I would say if we can get at least one or two nights for parents to attend for this semester, that would be great.
Yeah. And so that speaks to kind of that piece of the volunteer engagement and the need for And so, then that speaks to the kind of that piece of the volunteer engagement and the need for some help from our piece. AFSP is a completely volunteer driven staff supported organization. I'm the only staff in the entire state of Michigan. So, if someone wants to take the realm, the reins on just getting the logistics planned out, if it works on my calendar, I'll be there to present it. So, that piece of it, a parent night and a community night, something for, something after school, we can do it at any time and just with availability. Some of the things that we're working very hard on is the implementation for that subset of teachers. But we're ready to help the community at any time.
Did I hear that this was on January 16th at West Middle School?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm not seeing this on the West Middle School bulletin that came out on the 21st of December.
We hadn't, back in December, we hadn't locked this date in yet.
So, what my fear is, is that how are we going to get notification to the community and to the parents that this program is available if it's coming up next week?
That would be a question.
It would be a question for the district, right?
Right, I'm not blaming you. I'm asking the question to, I mean, we have this great program coming up and nobody knows about it.
Yes, we'll utilize our email push notification. And the idea is frequency and as many as we can. So, when you talk about the urgency, is the quickest date that we could get it, we just secured. We'll get the communication out. We may not have a lot of people come, but we'll do our best.
Has there been any communication yet? Because West hasn't sent anything, I know that. So, the district has not sent anything out on this yet?
No.
Okay, so obviously tomorrow they'll go out?
I love you, Patrick. So, we will get that communicated out as quickly as possible. Just confirm, so we are working. We have been in school for two days. We will get that information out as quickly as possible. And I know that we have so many people in our community, Ms. Troy here, that will help us continue to push that information out.
So, if you're not going to get it out tomorrow, can you tell us that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Because given the short timeframe, I expect that we give as much notice as possible.
Yes.
Thank you.
But I think that the important thing also is that this is a start.
That's right.
Agreed, I love the fact that we've got a sense of urgency and that we made this happen this quickly. But it doesn't help if people don't know about it.
So, and I will say that sometimes it gets to be uncomfortable because we all know that you want to implement things properly. We're dealing with the urgency, so trying to grab as soon as we kind of hear information, getting things done. And that's why we'll say this is not just a one and done. This is how we want to do business in Plymouth Canton. So, this is a first opportunity to get that out and as we secure future dates and working with, you know, with our teaching staff, we will have a full implementation plan. But as we're doing that, we still want to build this plane while it's flying because it's important to get the information out.
Thank you. And what was the time of this meeting?
9:30.
AM, I assume?
Yep.
Questions on this side of the table?
Just taking notes.
I'm still thinking.
Okay. I believe I heard you say that you'd already forwarded a model policy to the district?
Yeah, Frank and I have been in contact. He's got a lot of documents and a further document that explains everything that we do as well. This is just kind of a drop in the bucket. We've got over 40 programs that we're able to implement within the community. So, if he hasn't gotten that out yet, I can resend it to all of you guys as well.
I would be interested. I know that the board subcommittee on policy has been looking at a suicide prevention policy. So, it would be really nice to.
We'll trade cards.
That would be wonderful. Okay, Kurt says it's coming. Okay, good. Okay, I thank you so much for coming tonight. I know that we've had several suicides here in our district also.
Sorry for the loss.
They weigh heavily on the board, so.
I'm sorry, yeah, we, you know, we can help with helping prevent and we can help with those who have lost. And so, it's a very, very complex and very tough to lose. And so, I know the feeling, so we can help on either side. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, to further support overall wellness, we have Brian Bergen as well from Growth Works. And so, we welcome Brian.
Good evening, everybody. I did not win my essay for DARE. Which probably explains why I spent the next 30 years working on substance abuse issues. I just wanted to say, good evening to everybody to be here. Nice to see those of you that I know. Hi to those of you that I don't. And nice to meet you. And I wanted to say Steve's, I was impressed. I met Steve a couple of years ago. And this is, you know, he talked about early detection and he talked about some things regarding suicide prevention that parallel addiction and substance use issues very well. And so, I was very impressed by some of the programming. And I just wanted to point out that, you know, I think that being able to have the conversation similarly to the, some of the conversation around substance use and some of the issues around addiction are extraordinarily important. So, I want to say thank you, Steve, for the work that you do. I'm here tonight probably a little less, I'm not, this isn't exactly as much of a presentation as more of it's just kind of a starting point in a conversation that piggybacked off of when Steve met to talk to some of the faculty about the suicide prevention. And so, I've had some discussions with some folks in the district and recently even with Nick about some ideas that maybe I wanted to kind of float by you in terms of developing a way to perhaps better communicate some of the issues around substance use disorder with faculty, staff, and perhaps even the community. Probably should take a step back. I am with Growth Works. Growth Works is a human service agency that's been in your community for many years, as Mike said. I've been in your community for better part of 25. And it's been a pleasure to serve the youth and families in the community. We're always looking for ways to innovate and be a better partner. And I wanted to float by an idea that I think might be kind of relevant and helpful. And so, I'll just kind of describe it this way. I know every year, one of the things that, you know, as a, as an active partner with you folks in the community, I always offer to do things like professional development and training for teachers and faculty in the district. It's a very, you know, it's very hard to fit issues that, around substance use disorders into all the other time crunch that comes with professional development in the community. And so, I've, in the last couple of years, I've worked on a couple of really groundbreaking initiatives with opioid use disorders and getting people help right away. We've dealt with partnership with St. Mary's Hospital and Trinity Health. It's really been great in terms of moving the needle. But one of the things that I found is that it's very difficult to work with sometimes with a large system and get all the different layers to understand and kind of embrace some of the information regarding change or things they need to know. And it kind of occurred to be in the process of in this partnership with St. Mary's that one of the ways that folks retrieve information today is through things like podcasts. And a lot of doctors and nurses and stuff like that will do some of their, even their training and their information gathering, like on their drive time through podcasting and stuff like that. And I went, huh, maybe that's something that I can do to kind of help educate them within the hospital system. And so, lo and behold, I was sitting at a meeting and we were, and we were talking about professional development. Somebody had asked me about when's the last time I had done one? And I said, wow, I wonder if I, you know, what if we develop content to do a podcasting for, for maybe faculty at the school? Maybe an opportunity to develop some content about the basics of addiction, continuing education perhaps, maybe for teachers, could apply to students, parents, anybody if we kind of develop it that way. But really what you're talking about then is, you know, the way I've done professional developments in the district before is people would, it's kind of, and if my understanding is correct, it's kind of like à la carte and people sign up. Well, the likelihood would be is that the people that would sign up are people that are knowledgeable and kind of aware and so, and might be affected by it. But interestingly, if you provided a different avenue for people to access it or something that they might be able to access when something comes up instead, you might access the teacher that has a third grader that might have a parent who's dealing with like an opioid addiction or something like that, that might not think to sign up for that professional development, but might, might have, might be able to use it as a great resource later. You know, my hope has always been in the work and I have a deep appreciation for this district because I've worked in this district for a long time. And you know, the real, the better we get at early detection, the better we get at being able to have the conversation, to be able to help prevent, and if people get involved in substance use, it's just the same, you know? People will become addicted and, you know, that wasn't a choice that they made, it happened. But what we do about it is really important. And one of the things that I've really learned, especially in the past 10 years of working with, beginning to work with young adults and adults, is that even when some people struggle with addiction issues as children and they've been exposed to treatment, even if they struggle for a little while longer and get into adulthood, they come back and they get well, and they get well at a younger age. And so, I really see opportunities to, you know, the more information that we get out there, the better we get at being able to deliver content and the different ways that we're able to do it. I think we're only moving the needle towards making a safer, healthier district, you know, both for parents and students. And so, I wanted to let you know that those were discussions that were ongoing, that I look forward to developing some content that might be useful to the district. We're still kind of at a place where we're not exactly sure how that would look. Nick and I had some discussions about podcasts, maybe with some YouTube channel things and trying to get creative with it. So, maybe, you know, maybe I come back to you at some point later with a little more about that. But I wanted to let you, there was an urgency. And so, it made sense for kind of to just do this together, Steve and I. So, that's really all I have, and I'm certainly open and welcome to questions. Patrick, if you have an hand. I'll just get that out of the way now.
Our reputation precedes me.
I did want to say, Brian, first of all, thank you for coming. And as I say, when, every time I see you, which I don't see you all the time, but most, last time I saw you was for Leadership Canton.
Yeah.
And I always am reminded, and I think about this every so often throughout the years, that probably now, maybe 10 years ago, you did a presentation at Discovery Middle School. That was, it was fascinating and very, very informative. And that has stuck with me, as you can see. But I also wanted to say that I think that exploring these different avenues, whether they're podcasts or videos or whatever, I think that's great. And I am absolutely certain that parents would be interested in this.
Okay.
Okay, having said that, members seated?
So, similar questions in terms of, so I see you've got community programs, school based programs. And what is the district doing in terms of looking at how these programs are going to be introduced to the kids? Are we looking at assemblies? Are we looking at, you've talked about a curriculum. How does that curriculum align with some of the health courses that are already in place? So, just wanting to hear more from the administration about integration of this work.
Yeah, so we'll definitely come back and report. As I said, we're really in the beginning stages of conversations. And so, to talk about what this would look like, and we'll come back and give a comprehensive look at the plan.
So, again, kind of echoing the earlier presentation, I would also encourage a parent night for this one as well. Or like the community support programs, a couple of nights to give parents some options to attend.
And they usually do do that throughout the year.
Yep, oh yeah, oh yeah.
So, I just want to thank you for bringing Brian and the Growth Works team in here. Because, you know, raising the visibility of these programs and the work that you're doing for the district is really appreciated. And I think that, you know, much like we're considering doing with the suicide prevention, anything that we can do to expand this stuff throughout the district. I think the mental health and wellbeing and physical wellbeing of our students is really important. And I think that that is, you know, the right investments for us to be making, you know, in the conversations we had. Dynamic plan and the other investments that we need to do, this is right along those lines. And I really appreciate how quickly you guys have brought some of these programs forward, even though they're not fully fleshed out, but at least we see the progress that you're making, so.
Thank you. We're definitely working together, removing stigma and having conversations, and we're all in it together.
We're on it.
That's right.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Brian.
Thanks for having us. Thanks for having me today.
Okay. Important and serious topics there. So, changing gears a little bit, we are now at finance and operations in our, on our agenda. First is considering approval of a resolution to award contracts for the bid package number 15, Bird parking lot expansion and PCP JV track replacement. This is from the 2015 bond money. Does anybody want to speak to this? Patrick?
So, I can speak to this. We went through this process at the FNO meeting. We reviewed the bids as part of this, this work. There was some confusion in terms of the materials that were provided that the team has corrected and updated that process. At Bird, this is a, an expansion of the parking lot to support the number of vehicles that we need to have there and avoid some of the traffic congestion that we have in that process. In the original plan that had come to the board, it just showed new parking spaces, but didn't show the loop actually going to encompass those spaces. So, you'll see actually in the bid packet and the drawing that the loop is actually extended from this. And they've done that by moving the pad for the dumpster that was there to be able to have a new dumpster pad. And so, it makes it so that you actually have a proper loop in the, on the north side of the school. At the JV track level, this is to resurface as well as replace the underlying process in the JV track. If you remember correctly, our surface is really almost at an dangerous level right now. And the opportunity for us is not just to resurface it, but actually to rebuild that track. And so, that's one of the things that's considered as part of this bid packet. We also are, I believe, proposing a, one of the alternate components is this, which is a, a storage building on the facility to make it so that we actually have room for the equipment and the other things that need to be included in this part of that process. So, this was a very healthy discussion at the FNO meeting, as most of them are. And I think that this is the right things for us to do for the district and these particular projects. And this is also made possible by the community's great support on the bond programs that we've done.
And I forgot to mention, this is a first reading only.
Yes. We, for those new board members here, we have representation from both our, our operations team with a...
I see Mike back there.
Mike Peterson.
Exactly, Mike Peterson. I was thinking Mike Bender, and it's not Mike Bender, Mike Peterson, as well as with McCarthy and Smith. There are some of the construction management teams. So, if there's any questions that you have, then we're certainly opportunities to ask those things.
Yeah, Brian Guessens here from McCarthy Smith, as well as Bill Weinrack from TMP, the architect.
Right, the architects.
So, are there questions on? This, this bid pack, I guess. Okay. All right, and then next is considering approval of a resolution to award contracts for the bid package number 16, Canton, Plymouth and Salem High Schools remodeling projects, again, from the 2015 bond monies. And again, this is a first reading only. Do you want to speak to this one, Patrick?
Sure, so the first project that's part of this is the Salem High School pool upgrades. If you remember, we had a conversation about the high school pool upgrades and addressing a safety issue that we had with respect to the tower that was there for the timing process. Originally, there was a plan where they were going to take up some space in the bleachers to be able to put the new timing area in place and to give them a direct line of sight to the, to the pool. Given the small size of the bleacher sections and the conversations with the stakeholders at the pool, they moved to a different plan to actually have this as a smaller accessible raised platform that will be available on the deck. The accessible component is something that can be moved or removed, but can be added if they need to have accessibility that's there for anybody that does the timing. This was done, from what I understand, in consultation with both the coaches, as well as the pool staff and team in order to do that part of the process. There's also in this bid packet, there's two other items. One is on the Canton High School servery. This is the kitchen serving area for Canton High School and the remodeling work that needs to support that. It's really been a real struggle for them as part of that process, as well as upgrading the Salem High School kitchens, air conditioning. That's one that's really has been inadequate in the ability to support and serve that. And then lastly, there are two domestic hot water boiler replacements at both Plymouth High School and Salem High School. If you remember from the discussion that we had in authorizing this bid out, those boilers are leaking and are having problems. And so, this is a situation where those boilers would be replaced with, in one case, two smaller boilers and has to cut up the original boiler to take it out, as well as another boiler that was leaking over the other equipment there. And so, something that needs to get done on an urgent basis.
Are there questions on this?
Got a question about the pool. So, what exactly is being repaired on the pool?
So, it's probably better to have TMP talk about it. It's not so much repaired. So, there are, there are some repairs that are occurring at the pool, but it also includes adding a new timing stand as part of that. So, but go ahead.
So, the upgrades have to do with replacement of all the cables that are currently hung from the ceiling. We are replacing the electrical wiring that's on the walls that is draped through the existing pool deck.
Okay.
The cabling for the timing system will be brand new. It's going to go in the pool tunnel. We're taking that over to the starting blocks and it'll be tagged to the new platform. We're repairing a lot of the ceramic tile that is bad. There was an alternative to replace the starting blocks. So, that alternative needs to be discussed as far as how that's going to take place. At the time of bids, there wasn't any bidders, so we need to take a look at getting those timing, the starting blocks. The starting block replacements was not part of the original program that came to the board for approval, so we bid it out as an alternative. The other work that's happening there, again, is just a lot of the electrical that's there. There's a lot of outlets that are not GFI rated.
Okay.
So, they're going to be replaced for safety.
Okay, thank you. So, the tile, the electrician, electrical around the pool, the starting blocks are going to be bitted, basically?
We're going to look at replacing those starting blocks. We have to get that bid out.
All right, and then what about the touchpad? Is there going to be like a touchpad there?
You know, the touchpad system that's in place, our understanding, talking with the school, is they are functional. The problems they were having is with the cabling that was draped through the pool and the connections that they have. So, we're replacing that cabling and we're providing new connections.
Which should correct the problem.
Should correct the problem. The company that currently services that equipment will be the company that does the installation of the new work.
Now, what about the time clock that's on there? Is that going to be replaced? I'm just...
The equipment that they have today.
Right.
Scoreboard, that equipment is there and functional.
Okay.
So, we are rewiring so that it's in conduit and it's being replaced so that it's all functional.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, on that same lines, we didn't talk about the alternative in FNO. I know you didn't get any bids on that. Is that something that's still an opportunity for us to get bids on or to estimate the cost for that or?
We need to go back. What the intent was is to go back and try to obtain bids through three bidders and then come back to the group as far as approval of spending those dollars. It's a smaller dollar amount.
So, are we?
It was approximately 10 to 15,000, is that what you said?
Yeah, it was under, they just had it replaced over at Canton and it was below 15 grand. So, the intent would be as the project progresses to get the pricing, see how the contingency dollar... So the intent would be, as the project progresses, to get the pricing, see how the contingency dollars are, are being spent. And it's potentially possible to use the contingency dollars to replace those, those starting blocks.
Okay. That makes sense. Towards that end, if we discover that we don't have the bids or we need to bring this forward separately, I know that it's below our normal 25,000 threshold. But can you at least make the board aware of us moving forward with that, that process or not moving forward with it?
Absolutely.
We sure will.
Okay. What you just discussed, is that gonna have any problem with doing the other work first? Or do you have to do it all at the same time? So we have to get a bid in?
Member Brooks, could you speak into your microphone, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the, the bid that we need to get for the new starting blocks, does that have to be in before you can start to work on the other?
The work in the pool is scheduled to happen through the summer. So we have time to get bids, discuss it with the group as to whether the dollars will be spent. And we'll have ample time to make sure that if the blocks are replaced, it won't affect or will be incorporated into the work.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. We are now at letter E on our agenda, which is follow-up board questions. So at our meeting on December 11th, we had a list of things. The subgroup data, I think we got that. Charter school scores in our district, I think we got that. Scores versus foundation allowance for benchmark districts, including social studies and science. I think we got that. Scheduling of future presentations.
We shared the board calendar, draft board calendar.
Information about the semester-long courses that students were taking because of the AP US government change. And we got that.
We got that before the next board meeting. So, which is when we needed to vote on it. So it was great.
Yes. But we hadn't discussed follow-up board questions at that board meeting, cause we had a special meeting. Okay. So I think all of those can be taken off. And then for tonight, I have listed, and we can rephrase these, dates for PD and training for the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention programming, like when they're going to be scheduled or a timeline for that.
Right. So I think that there was some concern that they wouldn't have the full schedule. So in the event that they can't give us the full schedule quickly, tell us when they can give us the full schedule. So the dates to give us the dates or the actual dates, either one.
Okay. And then I think we were also thinking along the same lines for the Growth Works programs.
And the alignment to the curriculum, how is that gonna play out internally?
And then I think we wanted to follow up on the bid out process for the starting blocks. Is that right?
Yep. And then also back on the previous subject, the communications plan for the Wednesday, December, or sorry, Wednesday, January 16th meeting, to make sure that that gets communicated quickly.
Okay. We won't have a board meeting before that date.
Right. So I think that we agreed that if they were not gonna be able to send the communication tomorrow, that they would tell us.
I think we're gonna get that out tomorrow.
That's, that's, that's the right answer. That's the right answer.
Nick's fingers over there moving as we speak. Probably done.
That's the right answer. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else that I may have missed? Okay. Well, then I think we're at the end of our agenda.
I just wanna make a comment to our new board members. This is an extraordinarily fast meeting.
At the time right now, it's like, it took an hour.
Yeah, John, you've been here. You've been to these, a lot of these meetings. So this is not the way it usually rolls.
Thank you.
Get a light agenda. We're just getting started. Next time we'll have more.
I know, I know. Count my blessings, right?
That's right.
Yep. So at this time, if anyone would like to adjourn, they could make a motion.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Aye, second. Okay. Motion wins made by Member Sido and, I mean, by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Sido. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. And we are now adjourned.